Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting. The meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll calls.
Chuck Brown?
Here.
Mike Bruno?
Here.
Ron Cummings?
Here.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Here.
Dean Kilburg?
Here.
Craig Maladra?
Here.
Richard Marx?
Here.
Mary Sino?
Here.
Tom Simontian?
Here.
Ron Singer?
Here.
We have a full house this evening. We begin our city council meetings with a pledge of allegiance. It's my honor to recognize the birthday boy, Alderman Marx. I ask him to please lead us in the pledge.
Right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
You know what that means, Simontian? He's buying dinner tonight, won't he?
That'll be the day.
And I would be remiss if I did not also wish our city clerk happy birthday this past Saturday. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
And in case you're curious, Babica celebrates tomorrow. Where is he?
Happy birthday.
Big day tomorrow. We have a fairly light agenda, but we do unfortunately have to begin on a sad note. For those of you in the audience who have not heard yet, a longtime Geneva resident, former Alderman, business owner, member of several not-for-profit boards, and just an all-around great guy, Weldon Johnson passed away this morning. The flag here at City Hall is flying at half-staff and will for the remainder of the week. And the flags at the other city properties will also be flying out of respect for all the contributions Weldon made, and certainly as a sign of our love and respect to his family. So if we could begin the meeting tonight with a moment of silence to honor Mr. Johnson, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may say a few words?
Please do, Alderman.
Thank you for your kind words. I had the honor of serving this Alderman, Weldon Johnson, on this council. He certainly always pushed Geneva. He was Geneva's, as you have said in your mail today, his most vivid and energetic fan. He loved Geneva, grew up here, attended Geneva High School. He was always pushing Geneva, shopped Geneva, loved Geneva. And if I've, over the years, tried to say as often as I can, "Please shop Geneva," I learned that from Weldon. I can't remember how many Swedish days parades when Mr. Viking was Weldon Johnson. They were numerous, and the crowd looked forward to it. My kids went to school with his kids. Wonderful family, lived on Anderson Boulevard, and we will all miss him very, very much. Sad to hear of his parting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Would it be fair, Alderman Brown, that we would raise a cup of glug in Mr. Johnson's honor?
Some of us remember the back of Viking's office supplies, and at certain times of the year there was glug available.
Yes.
With that, not on the record, please.
Of course not. And a big shout-out to Mr. Cole Higgins' 5th grade class at Heartland Elementary School. I had the pleasure of visiting with the kids last week, and they had all sorts of impressive people come to their classroom, and for whatever reason, they invited me. And I promised the kids I'd give them a big shout-out tonight. So hopefully, they're tuning in, and hopefully, Mr. Cole Higgins will send me an email that I was successful in doing so. Onto the business at hand. Thank you for indulging all of us. Our first order of business is item 3A, which is just really an announcement. Actually, we need a motion to continue this, Mary, or just an announcement, right?
I think a motion would be scheduled.
Well, you're not opening.
We're not going to open it, so we're just a kind of announcement. Just an announcement that the public hearing on the engagement of special service area number 16 will be rescheduled to April 6, 2015. Is there anyone here by chance regarding that item? Item 3B is an update by the Geneva Police Department on the coyote sighting-tracking program. We have with us our distinguished chief of police, Mr. Mexon, and our commander Julie Nash. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Okay. For the next few minutes, I'd just like to provide you, as the mayor said, with a brief update on some information we gathered about coyote activity within Geneva since we last discussed the matter. If you'll recall, there was a committee of the whole meeting on June 23 of last year, during which there was a policy discussion about coyote activity. There was a group of Fisher Farm residents here speaking about their concern regarding the increased activity, the bold activity of some coyotes in the area, and what they felt was threatening activity, and the risk that they felt the coyotes were posing now. There was also a local trapper that spoke about coyote behavior and some of the options that trapping could provide. And then all of you engaged in a discussion about the topic. At the end of the meeting, direction was given to staff to research techniques that others have used in coping with this type of issue. Two Aldermen expressed an interest in seeing if the county would be interested in partnering with us in some way to address this issue. And then the residents were encouraged to report any sightings of coyote activity so we could gather some of this data. Now, with regard to the county having any interest in partnering with us, we checked with them. They had absolutely no interest whatsoever, and said they not only were not interested, but could not engage in any type of partnership to trap or trap for the purpose of euthanizing or relocating coyotes. Now, within a couple of days of that meeting, Kevin Starr created a link on our city's webpage so that citizens could report any coyote sightings through the request tracker system. The police department then began reviewing each of these requests and responded in like on request tracker to each report that was submitted. Reports, as had been done previously to this, were taken by the police department any time a coyote was engaged in any activity which injured an animal, a pet, a dog, a cat, anything of that, or any attacks on people. So although we had been doing that, we continued to do that, to take written case reports on that activity. We also created a survey that was about this issue. It was a brief survey with nine questions, sent out to 56 Chicagoland communities. Twenty-four of those communities responded back. Some didn't answer every single question, so you will see some difference in there in the survey results when I show them to you in a moment. But that's why 24 responded, not all of them responded to each and every question. So you could see, just, I'll just run through these very quickly. Twenty-three of the 24 communities reported occasional or frequent coyote activity within their communities. We asked if the community does have some level of activity, what's the posture on this activity from your, from a city's perspective? Eighteen of the 24 reported that they have basically the same level of activity or involvement that the city of Geneva has, or less. Most was less. One documented all sightings and activity, and there were four communities that had no posture or took no position on the matter whatsoever. We asked, when a citizen wants to report the activity, what type of activity did their police departments actually document? One documented all sightings. Eleven only documented attacks on animals or people. Four documented some different types of coyote activity which they felt was alarming and warranted a report. And then four communities documented no reports, documented no, nothing at all about this. There was asked to the communities how many had ever hired a person or an outside agency to trap or kill coyotes. Eighteen reported that they had never hired anyone. Three reported that they had hired someone. And that's a little bit of a misnomer. It turned out that only two municipalities paid for it themselves. One had a different type of funding that they used. Of those three, two of them said that there was a positive, there was a positive and noticeable effect on the coyote activity when they did use trapping. It was asked how much it cost them. One community said it cost them less than $500 to use a trapper. The other one said that it cost between $2,500 and $5,000. What the difference is between those, I do not know. If someone paid to trap or kill the coyotes, who paid for it? That was a big question. Two communities said they paid for it. One homeowner's association paid for it, and then one said a private citizen paid for that. But that, that community did not report that they had done anything. So when you see three there and four here, that's why. They were reporting just the private citizen. If when a citizen reports a coyote to your police department, what type of response is typically engaged in by the police department? The vast majority, again, were, do just what the Geneva Police Department does. An officer will respond to the scene of where the coyote is last, was last seen, typically will not take any action unless they witness the coyote actually attacking or threatening a human or domestic animal. Most of the time, we've found that the coyotes are either long gone or not engaged in anything once we get there. And then lastly, what department within your city takes the lead role in documenting these? And the majority was the police department. So between May 1 and December 31, we received through request tracker and, and other means, 131 reported coyote sightings. Four pets unfortunately were attacked during these reports. Three were killed. There were two dogs, small dogs, one cat, and one animal was injured. And you can see up there where those locations are where the attacks occurred. So there were two on the west side and two on the east side. There were also a few additional reports of coyotes exhibiting what the citizens believed was stalking-type behavior. That was their characterization of it, not, not the police department's. Most of the reports, the vast majority of the sightings, were simply coyotes walking, running, crossing the road, walking down the street, walking down the sidewalk, non-threatening in nature. So what does the data, what has the data told us? It tells us where the coyotes are being seen, for the most part. So if you look up at the screen, you'll see that in the upper left-hand corner, where the dark blue circles are, that's basically the Fisher Farms area, the area where the residents came in from on the June 23 meeting. Significant number of sightings in that area, but as you will also see, the surrounding areas also received a significant amount of activity. The area just to the right, that goes from Randall Road down to about Willow and Williamsburg over to about Brisher, that's the Cambridge area, that received probably the highest number of sightings and activity. The one directly below that received, I believe, the second highest number of sightings, which is the Pepper Valley area. And then the, next to the left, is the yellow area, which received a significant number of them. But if you'll see, as I pan over, there were also quite a few reported sightings on the east side, and again, there were two, two attacks on the east side reported as well. And if you pan down even further south, you'll see that there were a few scattered reported sightings in those areas as well. So pretty much all over the city, there's been seen coyote activity. But as you can also see, the vast majority of the sightings are in the upper left-hand northwest quadrant of, of the city. It also identified areas of town experiencing regular coyote activity, which we just discussed. The type of activity the coyotes are engaging in, which I mentioned briefly, most was non-threatening walking-around behavior. Now, that's not to discount the, the threatening behavior that was seen and reported by some, or the attacks. I don't want to underscore that. But again, the, the majority of the activity was, was non-threatening. The survey tells us what other communities are doing in response, and I have already covered that, and the number of times coyotes have caused physical harm, which was the four attacks on pets, no attacks on people. Now, what, or, and a couple of the other things that I thought was interesting. Some of the coyotes, we confirmed, are clearly not as afraid of human behavior as you would think they might be or should be. So those reports, I think, are absolutely accurate. There are some that seem to be pretty, pretty much habituated to this environment. We also confirmed that there was at least one resident who was actively feeding on a regular routine basis a coyote that would come into the area, and so much so, it would come up to his driveway at a specific time in the evening and eat off a plate. So we spoke with that gentleman, told him the negative effect that can have, informed him of the law, and that he could not do that. So I believe that ended that. We also heard that one other person may have been engaged in that, but we're not sure of that. And then at least one coyote has a tracking device on its, around its neck. Who's tracking it? I have no idea, but I personally confirmed that myself. Now, what the data does not tell us is how many coyotes are in town. We know how many people, we know how many sightings were reported. I also know that there were a lot of sightings that were not reported. I also know that a lot of the reports were of the same coyote in the same area around the same time, and a lot of the same people were reporting activity on more than one occasion. So it doesn't tell us how many coyotes are in town, unfortunately. It doesn't tell us how many pose a threat. Now, obviously, any coyote can pose a threat to small animals, of course, under certain circumstances, if they're out alone or whatever. But as far as posing a threat to the residents, that's really undetermined. We don't know how many dens there are in town or the location of dens, even though we've tried looking for them, we haven't found any that we could confirm. Possibly, some of the citizens know, but we, we have not learned that. And we don't know how effective or ineffective capturing or removing individual coyotes would be. If you do research online, you'll find arguments on both sides of that, and that's what I'm sure that you'll discuss following this. So ultimately, I think it's up to the council at this point in time to discuss it, debate the, the issue, and decide what you want the city's posture to be, whether you want it to be the city maintaining our current posture of public education, learning to coexist with coyotes, and continuing to document coyote attacks as we, as we currently do. Or do you want the city's role to be expanded to the point that you would hire or recommend a trapper to be hired to, again, either relocate or euthanize the captured animals? Now, if you decide that's the route you want to go, I think it opens the door up to a lot of other questions that must be addressed, and that is, who's going to pay for the cost of hiring someone? Will there be a limit to how much the city would, would pay? How long will the policy to capture these coyotes last? If you do it this year, chances are, are almost a certainty that they'll still be here next year, then you, you know, it would be hard for us not to continue the policy year after year after year. And then what would constitute the need, or what would be the threshold for deciding when the city would act? Is it a high number of sightings? Is it an attack which injures an animal? Is it an attack which kills an animal? If you have one animal that's attacked here, but you have 50 sightings over here, which would you decide? So there, and there, I'm sure, are many, many other, other questions that would need to be addressed and answered before. In, in closing, I just wanted to mention a couple of interesting things, well, information that I thought you would find interesting. On November 18, if you'll recall, we had student government, and some high school students joined, city officials and city staff for the day. And during that day, there was a mock city council meeting, and during that city council meeting, the students discussed this specific topic, and they debated it back and forth, discussed all the issues. And at the end of the meeting, they voted unanimously to maintain the current policy of education rather than to take any additional measure to trap and/or euthanize the coyote activity. And I'm not saying that as a suggestion, or I'm just, I thought it would be interesting to you to know what they thought, because I know some of you knew that they had discussed it. And then lastly, I was, I was reading this, this periodical, it's a law enforcement periodical that I just got like a week and a half ago, and I just found it interesting because there's an article on coyotes. And in part, it said that the village of Riverside and local law enforcement have created a humane coyote management policy. Police and village officials have collaborated with the Humane Society of the, of the United States, become the first community in the nation to adopt the organization's new template coyote management policy. The new policy focuses on educating residents, managing trash and other items that attract coyotes, collecting coyote sighting data, and using proven non-lethal techniques or of aversive conditioning or hazing to deter coyotes who become too bold. So I hate to break the news to them, but they're, it's not the first in the nation because that's exactly what we're doing. So I think we, we beat them to the punch on that. So with that, I will leave it to, to you to discuss. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions if you have any.
Alderman Flanagan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did you see, or could you document which months there was an increase as opposed to a decrease in certain months? I mean, was the sightings and attacks done more in fall, or?
I can tell you.
Winter?
I will start with June because that was the month that we started.
That's what I, yeah.
There were eight sightings reported in June, and again, that, it was late June when we started collecting the data, really. I mean, we, we did go back prior to that, but, but the request tracker was not used at that time. So, so only eight in June. There were 45 sightings reported in July. There were 22 sightings in August. There were 18 reported sightings in September, 15 sightings in October, 10 sightings in November, and 11 sightings in December.
And, and when was the, could you tell me just when were the attacks, which month that was?
I can.
I'm just, well, no, it's a determination they would.
There was an attack that injured a dog on July 19. The Kirkwood attack occurred in August. The Ridge Point attack occurred in October, and there was an attack, an attack on a dog on Woodward in December.
So it really doesn't matter which month this was. Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Singer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, the attack in which four dog owners, and which three were killed, were those dogs on, were they leashed at the time, or were they out?
I could not speak to all of those occasions. The one in December, when it was reported to us, someone saw the dog, or saw the coyote carrying the dog down the, the street. So I don't know if it was on a leash or just in a yard. One of the others, I believe, was just in a yard. One was a cat, so I doubt if it was leashed. And I don't know about the other one.
Mr. Singer, could I trouble you to turn your microphone on? I think there may have been a, there you go. My apologies.
Those dogs were unleashed in just out in the family's backyard areas. Were these people not educated that these are serious issues and which is likelihood that these animals can be?
Whether they were educated prior to that or not, I, I couldn't say. We certainly try to get the word out as much as we can. We, when people call in, we provide them with, with written information, verbal information. It's on the website. It's been in the newspaper. So we try, we try our best to get the information out. Whether those particular people were informed, I, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. I'll thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think what you're doing is good. I can think of a number of different reasons. One is, we're obviously learning something about whether this is a real problem or not. And second, it's convincing people that you do respond to their perceived problems, and it's getting your vehicles out there and into the neighborhoods and finding what's really going on. The other side of this coin, of course, is, is this much of a burden on your department to be responding to these calls? They're typically occurring in the evening, I presume.
Responding to the calls has not, has not been a burden, and I don't see that as being a burden in the future. Collecting the data has been very time-consuming.
Yeah.
It may not seem so, just based on the number of sightings, but it has taken up a considerable amount of time creating the spreadsheets and calling people back and doing all this, and so that has been time-consuming.
That's management. I'm not worried about that. I'm worried about the officers on the beat.
No, I don't think that has been, no.
And I guess the one other thing, now, I can't remember what I wanted to say, but if we continue the way we are, this is not a burden on your department at the moment to be doing this and continuing, and, but it appears we already sort of know what the problem is. And the fact that we're ahead of other communities amuses me. I'd like to see a copy of that article, if possible, that you found in your policeman's journal.
Absolutely. Sure. I can, I will scan it and send it out to everyone if you'd all like to see it.
Mm-hmm. But I, you know, I get good vibes. In our neighborhood I happen to live, my wife is one of the people who reported a number of times. We had our pet coyote that ran right down the middle stripe of West Lane. Every night at 10:30, you could set your watch. And then at some point, he changed direction, so he went south instead of north. We still can't figure that one out. But anyway, there is an educational component, right? When you do respond, you do talk to these people, or you try to somehow convince them that, that you're part of a program where we're trying to understand what's going on and determine what our appropriate response would be. I, at the moment, would be in favor of sort of continuing what we're doing. It appears it's tapering off slightly, which may mean that the education is getting out there. And if so, I think that's a good, good outcome of this program, that people are beginning to understand that it is possible to report, that most of the sightings are not threatening sightings, et cetera. So I would be in favor of continuing, as long as it's not too much of a burden on your officers at night. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Maladra? Alderman Simontian?
So, you know, we, I just started to receive calls of coyote activity in, in the fifth ward, and so I've engaged in several conversations about it. The, the thing that I'm wrestling with right now is a more active approach, trapping for whatever purpose. And this would be a question to my partners on the council. I'm, I'm not sure yet how we would measure success. So we know the problem. We have between one and N coyotes in Geneva. We don't know what N is. So if we trap one, have we succeeded? If we trap 10, have we succeeded? At what point do we consider this to be a success? And then I extrapolate out from there. If we're trapping and Batavia's not trapping, we open up, put up a sign for the Batavia coyotes saying vacancy here in Geneva, and, you know, they just move in. So at some point, at some point, that solution seems to me to require regional action, more so than, than local action. At the same time, I, I believe that it can be very frightening to people, particularly people who feel defenseless in the face of a wild animal and things like that. So short of trapping, is there anything that we can do to increase comfort level in the city? You, I don't want to get into giving hazing lessons, but, you know, I think one, coexistence is achieved when people learn how to keep them at bay, they learn or relearn how to keep their distance from humans, et cetera, et cetera. So these are the, just the issues that I've been wrestling with over the last month or so, and I don't have answers yet.
And if I could just add, I, I sympathize with the people that are And if I could just add, I, I sympathize with the people that are fearful and do have anxiety about this, and certainly sympathize with the people that have lost animals and pets. That's gotta be a traumatic experience. Some of them have watched it happen, and, and they look to the police department to do something about it. Unfortunately, I think the reality is, there is limited amount of action we can take as a police department to, to address the coyote population in Geneva and make this problem go away as people would like us to. We certainly can't go start shooting coyotes. I don't want my, my officers out doing that. That's extremely dangerous for the, for the population. We certainly can't trap them. We don't have the equipment or the training. We, we're happy to go out and, and go in the area and hopefully make sure that that doesn't happen and intervene if we have to. Thankfully, we haven't had to yet, but we would if we had to. But it's important for people to know that there is a limited amount of action the police officers can take, as much as we would like to. There's, it, it's limited.
Alderman Simonian?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, a couple of things. Why, why won't, or why can't the county? Sorry, why won't, or why can't the county be involved in this?
I'm going to turn to my col-, I'm going to turn to my colleague, Commander Nash. She was the one that actually spoke with the representative, so I'll, I'll let her-
Commander Nash, if you could join us-
Exactly what she was told.
Thank you very much.
I just have the goodness of my heart tonight to support him. I spoke with the new administrator and asked them if they would be willing to partner with us. I didn't know necessarily how we were going to partner, or what we were going to do, but any, but anything, and he said that they would gladly help us in education. That's the route they take, but under state law, they can't-
Trap and euthanize.
Trap and euthanize the animals, so. But they were more than happy to help us educate, which I think we've done a pretty good job to this point.
According to state law, they're prohibited from trapping and euthanizing. Are we prohibited from trapping and euthanizing as a city?
No.
I don't have the answer to that.
I do not believe so.
Okay. The other question I have is, Chief, is you had, you had mentioned on your survey that there was three communities that had hired professional trappers-
Yes.
-and two of them had positive results. One's costing about five hundred, the other between twenty-five hundred and five thousand. Do you have any idea what their definition of positive results are, or-
I don't. They did not-
Impact on the-
They did not elaborate on that. I can tell you that Huntley was one of the communities. They trapped three or four times between two thousand nine and two thousand eleven, and all they said was they had a positive effect, and we asked them a couple of times. They advised, they were the ones that advised, the cost was less than five hundred dollars, and the community paid for it. Now, again, I, I don't know how they got the price down that low, but that's what they said. One of the other communities was Campden Hills, and that's where, homeowners association paid for that. And Glen Ellen, they paid at a cost of between twenty-five hundred and five thousand, and it was unknown how many times, but they advised also that it was a positive effect. Why, why they're not continuing to do that, I, I don't know.
Do we know, do we know if Batavia and St. Charles are having the same issues?
I know they see them. They have sightings. I know St. Charles had a dog killed last year. I don't know of any other animals that have been attacked. I know they don't track them like we do-
Okay.
-or like we've done since June. So, it's really unknown how many coyotes we have compared to our neighboring communities. There's just no way of telling, because they haven't, they haven't tracked the sightings.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Kilburg just had a few questions.
Are we identifying those that are actually calling in? I just wonder if there's, there's an element maybe in the community that seems to be very energized as it relates to this issue, and that, you know, that the majority of the calls might be generated by maybe a dozen individuals. Is that a possibility?
There, there are some individuals that have reported multiple times.
Okay.
That's true. How many, I, I don't know.
Okay. Do we take their name?
We do.
Okay. And then-
Although, we would take, you know, one anonymous report, I suppose.
Sure, sure.
But I don't know of any that have done that.
The thing is, is, okay, you, you referred to something called hazing. I guess if we got into a situation with an extremely aggressive coyote and one that, or a specific area where we've had an aggressive coyote, what might be considered as a deterrent or some type of a hazing that could be, could be utilized in that type of situation? Are we talking about maybe non-lethal?
I think they're talking more like that anyone could do, loud noises-
Okay.
-things like that. Hazing doesn't refer to any type of action that, that the police would take. Hazing could be done by anyone in the community.
You're talking about the individual citizen, then?
Yes.
Okay. And then finally, have we contemplated at all doing anything on Channel Ten as it relates to coyotes? I know that we have through our publications, or through our, our newsletters and our communication over the web. Is there, is there a video or something that maybe we could implement in 2015 that would continue to reinforce what we're talking about? I, I would agree with Alderman Brown, and I think that we're on the right path here. I think that, you know, it's important that we continue to monitor, but if we can continue to further educate and continue doing what we're doing, I think, you know, that's the direction we should pursue. I don't know.
By way of history, we have had information put on Channel Ten and Channel ninety-nine?
I know we've had bullet points, but I'm wondering if there might be a ten or fifteen-minute video that-
Yeah.
-that further educates, because I think those types of things hold people's attention, and I think that you can get into a little bit more detail than, than some of the things-
Kind of like what we did on the LEAF program and stuff.
Yeah.
Exactly.
We, there, there is a very good video that we've watched. I think it was the state of Colorado-
I think it was, yes.
-put it out, and it was specific to hazing and techniques to use. We can, see if we can-
Okay.
-find something like that.
That's just a suggestion.
And, and as you, most of you, I think, know, several years ago, this issue was raised, and we addressed it then by working with IDNR and having experts in the field. We held public meetings to talk to the public and talk specifically about what they could do and, and hazing techniques. We put out some brochures, you know, so, again, we can try that, that same type of thing, but I, I do think that it's an ongoing effort, because, you know, even, I, I think the minute that you stop using those kinds of techniques, you're going to see them coming back, you know, so. Yes, we can. We will look into that.
Thank you, Chief.
I, I suspect we might have some guests in the audience this evening, perhaps regarding this issue. If so, I welcome anyone to join us at the podium, and please kindly share with us your name and address, and feel free to ask any questions or make any comments. Thank you, Chief. Good evening, sir.
I'm Dave Munch. I have a company called Scientific Wildlife Management. I'm a retired lieutenant from the Cook County Sheriff's Department, detective lieutenant that ran the SWAT team. The one, the, a couple of informational points for you. I've been removing problem coyotes for probably about thirty years. I do mostly rural work. My partner now is Rob Erickson, who presented that. A couple, a couple things to, I wanted to ask the chief, how much did it cost Riverside to outfit the police department?
Riverside?
Yeah. For the hazing?
I have no idea.
Okay. There's, I think there's equipment you can get that the police department uses. Keep, keep in mind a couple of things here. A coyote, or any type of predator, learns, despite what the biologists say, they actually do learn. So, the one thing about hazing was, generally will work the first time. I'll, I'll grant that. Secondly, the second time you go to try it, the animal from the first time has no negative consequence. So, at that point, he goes, eh, okay, I'll leave. Third or fourth time, it's, he won't leave. So, there will be, you will always be faced with certain animals that you will have to deal with. I agree with the chief, it's not a good idea to have your law enforcement people shooting at coyotes in town. Trapping is basically very humane. The law requires us to use devices that do not injure the animal. And the one you saw with the collar on it, what color?
I couldn't tell you. I don't know what color it was. It had a radio antenna sticking out.
Yeah, if it's blaze orange, it's one of ours. It's a-
It's black.
It's black. Okay, that's-
The black or the red?
Okay, that's the Cook County study. That's one of their animals. And to show you, just to give you, this is just informational. I'm not trying to drum on business, I'm too busy at this point, but just, just to give you some information on some of these animals, the way they travel and stuff, your northwest corridor is, I would suspect, would be the prime spot for problems. The, the amount of coyote tracks crossing Peck Road this year was incredible, because I watch it, we watch it regularly. We have already moved, removed animals from town that have been issues that private citizens have requested, that they were fearful to even go out of their house. Those animals have been removed. There is one animal, the biologist told us that we could not successfully relocate coyotes. And we, we kept thinking that that's, you know, based on our experience, Mr. Erickson's been doing it forty years, I've been doing it thirty years, I don't know what Mark Scott and Time on him. But we did catch, her parents were killing swans. I didn't know those birds are twenty-five hundred bucks a piece. I mean, holy cow. So, a hospital called us to remove the coyotes. We did. We took eight out of the area. One of the animals we happened to catch was a young female, non-aggressive, so we put a GPS tracking collar on her. That was two years ago. Today, she's alive and well, has a boyfriend from some of the camera stuff we saw the other evening, and she's living on the golf course in Elgin. Her home range, her regular travel pattern was Elgin to, she was living for a long time by the pond, by the courthouse out here. There was a pond southeast of it. She loved that spot. The farthest west she ever got was by where the guys fly their little airplanes. She was over there. And then she'd go just north, just north Elgin a little bit. So, she's doing well, which is encouraging to us with, for some of the cities, that rather not euthanize the animal, that there is a possibility, in fact, we're involved in a study here pretty quick, but there's, there is a possibility, some of these animals can be relocated. Some, excuse me, some of the animals will, are so aggressive that they're just going to have to go. There's a Dr. Tim, if you want to look him up. It's on our website, scientificwildlifemanagement.com. It's on the website. It tells, there's seven steps of aggression that these animals go through. You need to, when you're informing your citizens, this is what you got to watch for, because there's, there's always going to be coyotes here. I mean, all of the cities will always have coyotes. So, and they're, they are kind of cool. You got to respect them. I mean, you look at what they're going through and how they live. One of the, one of the study animals-
Sir, if I could just interrupt for just a moment?
Sure.
I know there are other people here who probably want to speak as well.
Okay.
So, if I could courteously ask you to wrap it up, and your address, sir, is-
I'm Sycamore.
Sycamore. Welcome to Geneva.
Thanks.
So, if you could wrap it up in ten seconds, or we're going to invite some of our residents to-
Okay, great.
-buy their comments as well.
But the, what's, what you got to consider, and the, just the truth of the matter, is there will be a certain percentage of these numbers that you're going to have to deal with a little more forcefully, and that's it. You know, you can, you can say things about attacks and everything else, they will, a certain percent of them will do that. It's food. That's all the, that's all they look at. So, some of them you will have to deal with. The hazing, I'd be real careful of, I understand, you know, and it does work for a certain period of time, so.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Flanagan?
Excuse me, I just had a question. There was a top, a discussion that I had, and somebody made a comment that, you know, when you take feral cats, they neuter them. Have they ever thought of neutering the coyote and putting them back into-
Oh, my God.
Do they do that?
To show you the issue with that, ma'am, on a, on a farm that had a couple of cats killed last year, three of us went in and shot one night. This was, this was a total intention to reduce numbers in the area. We shot twenty-three in one night. We saw twenty others. So, the numbers that you're hearing about, there's three thousand in the city, or two thousand in Chicago, those are woefully low. There's, there's a lot of coyotes.
I, I understand that, but do, have they, have anybody initiated a program of neutering?
You can't possibly do that.
Can't do that, okay. That's all, I just asked, yeah.
Here's, here are the facts about cats.
We don't need any more facts, sir. Respectfully, because unfortunately, we've got a-
Just had that question.
Yeah.
They haven't tried it, because it's just-
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Maladra has a question for the gentleman?
I have a, wait, don't go away. So, you talked about the lady coyote that you captured and relocated.
Mm-hmm.
How do you determine where you relocate them to?
We had, we have, the law, law requires us, changing the law, by the way, that's helpful for you guys, that we actually got changed, the change in Freedom of Information Act, that if you do it, you cannot legally tell anybody you're doing it. So, it, it solves, it helps you guys, because the minute you say you're going to remove some coyotes, you'll get fifteen hundred emails.
Right, yeah, so what I'm getting at is-
We guarantee you'll get fifteen hundred tonight after the meeting.
Oh, yeah. Sure.
So, we, we trap a coyote, we relocate it, so our problem now becomes somebody else's problem.
No, not necessarily.
Okay.
Certain, certain animals, we've done, a lot of communities, that you take out one coyote, problem solved. One of the communities, lakefront, they had four dogs killed, they had fifteen, twelve to fifteen sightings a day. From the information that we got, we probably knew where he was. We went down, stood in Lake Michigan one night, and actually, with permission from the city, shot him on the beach of Lake Michigan. Everything stopped, they have not had a problem for two years.
Okay.
So, there's, there's very specific ways that you can get the bad guy.
Right, that wasn't my, my question was, when we do relocate, how do we determine where to relocate?
We, we take care of that. Other guys have permissions. To relocate, you have to have permission on the property, you're going to let the coyote go on.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, it can be, apparently can be done. It's very interesting. No. No, she has not. She tried to one night to the release point, and then changed her mind and came over here to the courthouse.
Thank you again, sir.
Sure.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, anyone else would like to add a comment? Yes, sir. Are you from the city of Geneva, sir?
I live in St. Charles.
Are you here to discuss the issue as it relates to the public in Geneva?
Yes.
Fantastic. I'm going to be judicious, though, in terms of keeping you on target, okay?
I'll stay on target.
Awesome.
I'm Mark Romano.
We've been known to trap public speakers before and release them elsewhere.
Not that I know of. I never admit to it. And this, this meeting's a lot better than what's on TV tonight with the State of the Union.
It's an apolitical environment, so.
Yep, it is. You asked about where you would relocate coyotes. Sometimes it's just not feasible-
Right.
-no matter what people tell you. The state rule is at least ten miles, no more than forty. And wild canines, they're, they're, they're not going to stay there. So, that's, this, this coyote that Dave was talking about, we caught her in Aurora, and she ran around for four or five months before she finally settled. So, she's kind of a, that's a, that's a, you know, a unique thing in a way. But a coyote that's, that's, you know, doing depredation, that's killing, you can't, it's got to be removed. But like Dave said, once you watch these animals, and we have ways, and you get the these animals, we have ways, and you get the reports, and there's things that, that you can see, and, you know, there is one animal, it's not all of them that are bad. So, you get that one, and then, you know, hence, that it's, you can, you can control them. But, there are coyotes that are everywhere. They're in St. Charles, they're in Geneva, they're in Batavia, and like you said, once you remove them, nature does fill voids. So, that's, that's a, another topic of this, you know, that's totally different topic, but they're everywhere. I get the calls, you know, and, and, and they're, they're, they're in your backyards, they're, they're everywhere.
Are you currently working, sir, for any homeowners associations in Geneva?
I work for a couple. Not doing coyotes, but I get...
Just removing neighbors?
I beg pardon?
What?
I trapped some coyotes here.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, I'm aware of the state law as well. You need permission from where you put that coyote.
You need permission from the landowner.
Correct. So, because our, our discussion back in June was, if we remove the coyotes from Geneva, do we call our friends in Elburn, Maple Park, and say, "By the way, we're dropping off 20"?
If you have someone out there that'll give written authorization for us to let one go, you could do that.
Interesting.
I wouldn't recommend it if it's killing, but you could do it. And the ultimate form of hazing is capturing the animal. That's the ultimate consequence. You capture that coyote and put a radio collar on it, chances are real good it's not gonna come near people again, because that's the ultimate form. It's been laid down, it's been tranquilized, you've, you know, it's had human hands on it, and it, it will stay away. So, if you ever wanna...
Sure. And can I tell you if your name again, sir? We wanna capture...
Mark Romano.
R-O-M-A-N-O?
Yes, just like the chief.
And you're with Scientific Well...
Wildlife Management.
Well, thank you. Thank you, sir.
That's all.
Alderman Singer for Mr. Romano?
Sir? Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What intrigues me is that in order for any animal to survive in, in the wilderness, you've gotta have a sense of food and water, and a reservation of a home of some nature, a den such as a coyote. Now, if you could eliminate any one of those products...
It's called carrying capacity.
Yeah. You could eliminate, I would think, the coyote from being able to multiply. But what's intriguing to me is, we've only heard of three animals that have been killed by coyotes. There have been like over 130-some sightings, but I'm sure that there were many duplicates that probably could almost say that there're probably half as many, you think, out there, as opposed to 130?
No, I think that there's just probably people that are, that are, that are more, you know, you've got people that don't care, you've got people that care more, and people that are overly, that maybe care too much. Every time they see a coyote, they call. So, I think you could take that map that you had up there, and with all those little dots for coyotes, and put that on every city in, in the, all the collar counties, and say, "This is what's there." It'd be pretty accurate.
Okay, so here's what's intriguing to me. Those animals have to find food someplace.
They do.
And all rabbits are gone in my yard. What, what are they eating?
They eat, coyotes eat whatever's available. They eat to kill, they kill to eat. They're like machines. They're computers. They're killing machines. They eat voles, they eat mice, they eat snakes. They like fruit in the summertime. They, they, they like berries, corn, any, any kinds of rodents.
Okay.
So, they, they will eat whatever, whatever they, they hunt for. Cats. I caught a big coyote last week, and I don't wanna get too graphic about this, but I couldn't help myself. I, I, I caught this in West Chicago, and I was looking at it and looking at it, and I skinned it, and I looked at it, and I, the stomach on this thing was this big. So, I opened it up, and it had a cat in it, a big old cat. I don't know if it was feral, I didn't see a collar on it, but they eat whatever. And I've also, you know, it's, it's documented, they've, you know, in the study in Cook County, they, they're found with raccoon fur in them, muskrat fur, you know, larger mammals too. Whatever, whatever is...
Anything else, Alderman, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Also, anyone else for Mr. Romano? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, oh, chief, the chairman?
I have a quick comment, reference a, a statement that Mr. Romano made. And, and by no means am I saying that I know any more about coyotes than Mr. Romano. I'm sure he is far more educated on this than I am. But he, but he made a comment just now that the ultimate hazing is capturing and putting a collar on it, and you wouldn't see them again. But one of the coyotes that we have numerous reports on has a collar on it, and out by Bradbury. So, obviously, it's been captured, it's been collared, and we receive many calls on it. And it's right in town. So, I just thought that, that mentioned it.
Ladies and gentlemen?
Wes, Wes, or chief?
Nothing more, sir, thank you, though. Ladies and gentlemen, please. Good evening, sir.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Pete Tumman, 473 Prairie View. We're on the west end, over there by the Peck Road Highway.
Yes, sir.
And this afternoon, actually, one of my neighbors sent the email out that you guys were having a discussion on this tonight. 3 o'clock, my wife looks out in the backyard, there's one in the backyard the size of a German shepherd. That one's been around a lot lately. I'd say two to three nights a week, we get woken up by, if you wanna call it a coyote party, there's at least three or four of them, they're hooting and hollering, they start yelping. If you ever heard a coyote bark, it'll wake you up out of a dead sleep. Normally, we'll, my, a couple of our neighbors, big spotlights, we'll shine them out, we'll see them. They run along that berm, right along where they're building that, what's the name of that? It's very rich. That new Ryan home something there.
Right, the new Ryan, yeah.
We back up right to where it's excavated. When they first built the model, they disrupted it then.
Okay.
And she took hold in the pond at Peck and Prairie View. And she had her pups there, and they were hanging out. They'd be out when the kids were going to school, 7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning, and at noon, she'd be sunning herself along Prairie View, right along the sidewalk, just laying there. They run up and down that berm behind the house all the time. You'll get up in the middle of the night when you hear them and you see them out there scattering around. They're getting stuff. They're definitely not eating all the rabbits, because there are plenty of rabbits by us, and they're definitely not eating all the mice, because when they dug that up, holy cow, it was a mice infestation. But they are constantly running through the neighborhood. They're good enough to stop acrosswalks when there's a car there, wait for the car to pass, and then walk across the street. They're definitely more active now, I think, than they have been all summer. And they're not afraid of people. You can go outside, you can holler at them, blow a whistle at them, they'll look at you, and then just keep doing what they're doing. They're not running away, they're not scattering away from us. They're going up against our houses. They're going nose to nose with other people's dogs. I understand the city's stance that you may not want to take a more aggressive stance towards this, but something probably does need to be done. Heartland School, they're walking through the parking lot of the school, the kids see them along the park, on that path off a border and where the juice squeezer is.
Right.
There are tons of them in there. And kids are walking home down that path, and they'll see the coyotes cross there. I don't know, you can educate people all you want, but unless you're educating the animal, which you're probably not gonna be able to educate this animal, something's gonna have to be done to attract them, to be able to stop the problem, to be able to limit the problem. What can be done, who knows? You know, that's up to a trapper, that's up to a, somebody that's involved with this. I mean, I've read the rules and regs through the DNR on hunting, and there is an open season on coyotes, it's pretty much all year. You're allowed to bait them, as long as you have proof that you caught it legally. You just have to have a hunting license and all this. Is it legal within city limits? Can we, can we hunt them? Not using a firearm, but can you hunt them and trap them? Is it legal, or is it against city law?
I don't know. Chief, would you happen to know?
I am not certain enough to go on record.
Great.
So, I, I have to...
But we can research that.
Coyotes could be a little different than, but most animals you cannot trap in Geneva.
Okay. Because I was reading, I actually have the book with me from the state, but they talked about different things, certain lenses of light. And pretty much on coyotes, compared to hunting deer...
Sure.
...everything else, you can do about everything you can't do with a deer, with any other animal, with a coyote, to lure them in, to hold them in place, to be able to do what you need to do to trap them, to be able to... It talks about firearms, obviously you cannot discharge a firearm.
Right, yeah.
You know, it talks about bow and arrow. I don't know what the rules are on a bow and arrow within city limits. Exactly, so you can't do that either. But if you were to trap it, if you were to call out a wildlife expert or removal person to yank it out, like catching the...
Yes, that's absolutely true. I thought your question was, can a private citizen...
Could you trap it?
...set up a trap to trap the animal? I don't know the answer to that. To contract out, yes, you can. Just like you can with raccoons or anything else that's in your home or whatever.
But could a private citizen do it?
I don't know. But if you have a car to leave with the chief, and he and I'll get back to you tomorrow with the answer to that.
I don't have a car, but I can give my name and number.
Oh, that'd be great, sure.
Okay, that's it.
Awesome.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, ladies and gentlemen? Good evening.
Caleb Locke, 3362 Harvest Ridge. My questions or comments may be a little bit directed, I appreciate what, from, I was here in June...
Right.
...that we were heard, and try to, you know, the research, I know it's a lot of work. I wish, should you hopefully decide to continue at least monitoring and making us, like I said, that we were heard. Unfortunately, I feel like you're getting maybe a third of the, and I know most of the sightings aren't aggressive. I just wish, how could we get the word out there, should you decide to move forward? Because I think a lot of, I can't speak for everyone, obviously, I can speak for my small group of friends, which isn't very large. But they still have the concept, or the idea that, "I'm gonna call the cops, they're not gonna do anything, what's the point?" You know, so to get maybe more friendly with the community, that, hey, you are trying, listening, taking the sound, taking the data, something to think about as we move forward, hopefully. And with the repeat callers, I mean, I could call 15 to 20 times a week, if you, if I really, or not call, but I, I could make that statement online. So, is it the same coyote? Possibly. You know, is it attacking my dog every time? No. But today at noon, he was in my backyard. Today at 2, he was at my neighbor's driveway. And then she's right across the street from Heartland. Kids are getting out at 2:20. So, I don't know, I guess, are you expecting us every single time? Do you want, I mean, I, to get the accurate data of, I don't know, I might be there, like, how do we...
No, I think you are.
I think it's great that you're tracking and we're starting this. And like I said, it could be the same stu-, I'm sorry, the same stupid coyote every single time. So, how to, if you should agree to move forward, maybe that's something to...
I think that's a fair question, but unfortunately, I don't have a, a good answer for you, because oftentimes, I'm sure it is going to be the same coyote. That doesn't mean that you shouldn't call.
Right.
But then also, multiple people will be reporting the same, seeing the same coyote around the same time.
Which is the case in our neighborhood. It's the same group running through all the time.
Right. So, what additional information that would give us, that we could, you know, something with that would help the situation, I don't, I don't know.
Right.
But I think it's a valid question. I don't have a good answer for you.
And we just, well, in our area, wanna prove that it still is out there, it's still an issue. Like I said, they're in our backyards, our kids are out playing, so, you know, even though it's only 131, to some of us, it's a daily, and I go out with a baseball bat at night with my dog, so, I don't know.
Well, valid point, if you don't mind me interjecting.
Oh, please do.
I think this is part of the education process, too, and I think we've discovered just recently, we're having to educate the public more also on aggressive behavior versus sighting, you know?
Right.
And again, you obviously appear very well-educated about this topic, in that you understand if the coyote is walking around, that may not be aggressive behavior. But if the coyote is out by Heartland School and the kids are getting out, that's a call to 911. I mean, that's where the officers need to come out, and we need to make sure that the welfare of the children is taken into consideration.
Right. And that's where the community needs to feel like they can call you and not be like, "Ah, we don't do," you know, and I don't mean that offensive to you.
No, no.
I think that might be the perception from the past, and so, how do we...
I think that's part of the learning process, because ironically, I just sent an email out to officers and employees of Geneva Police Department today, to when a call comes in, because we have some citizens who are calling about every coyote they see. Seeing a coyote is disturbing, but it's not necessarily aggressive behavior. And so, I asked the officers and the employees to basically ask more questions when these calls come in. And sometimes the response will be, "You need to go and do request tracker." Sometimes the response will be, "Let me forward you to 911, and let me get an officer up." So, already, right there shows that we, you know, we're learning, we're all learning. So, I think that's part of the education process.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions for our guests? Thank you very much. Anyone else, ladies It's the whole Sycamore thing. It's the whole Sycamore thing.
Yeah, it is.
No, you have to use the microphone, though, and you gotta be very brief.
You need a mic?
Yes, we do, because this is broadcast worldwide. And we have to capture this for record. I'm gonna challenge you, Mr. Sycamore. You've got 30 seconds, how's that?
Okay, no, that's very good. Actually, I'd like to comment and, and compliment you on what you're doing. But it is, no, truthfully, it is very valuable. The tracking portion of it is really valuable, because if you do get down to the point where you've got the one you gotta take, that's, it's very helpful. Like, in, in what I do, it's extremely helpful to say, and we can look at the maps, we can look at the Google Maps and say, "That's the bad guy, right there." And it's, I would not recommend your citizens trapping, because they're gonna catch everybody's dog and cat and raccoon in the country. But, I'm serious. But, but the positive thing of it, you're doing the tracking study is a really good thing. And yes, you got a lot of animals here, you probably got a few bad guys, but that allows things to be done quickly. So, okay?
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Do you have homework to do tonight? You have to get back and do your homework?
I have to leave.
Yeah, yeah. Tell Dr. Law there's no homework on Tuesday nights at Heartland.
Yeah, I'll let him know that.
Yeah, let him know that.
He'll be there as well.
Any objection? We move on, ladies and gentlemen? Item number four, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council, and can be considered and acted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Birthday boy motions, and seconded by Alderman Singer. Mr. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Item number 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in aggregate, and they are some big numbers. Let's see if we can, maybe we should have Alderman Flanagan read this.
No.
I said no before.
But in my defense, I can, I can read these numbers.
I have a read though.
Bills for payment on January 5th, 2015, total $1,610,564.93. Bills for payment on January 20th, 2015, total $4,211,028.77.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve and pay both sets of bills. The invoices for both sets of bills can be found in the packet for tonight's meeting on the city's website.
I sec.
Motion by Alderman Brown to pay both sets of bills as presented, seconded by Alderman Flanagan.
And he did an excellent job.
Didn't he? Just like the word deuteronomy, just rolled off the tongue. Any comments or questions? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We skip down to new business. Any new business for this evening from any of our guests still remaining? From the dais? A motion to adjourns in order?
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Marks makes the motion, Alderman Singer makes the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It is adjourned. Microphones are off.